I would like to call to order tonight's meeting for the Board of Education. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Price?
Mrs. Porters?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mrs. Packard?
Here.
Mr. Reddick?
Here.
Okay, it's always a fun part of the night. We have presentations and tonight's spotlight is student government from the high school. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Yeah, we have Jennifer Limkey is our advisor for student government, among advisor of many other clubs and activities as well, so she's quite versed in how to advise our students, so we're really thankful for all the time she puts into our students, so I'll let her go ahead and introduce our students and then I'll take it from there.
So today, we have, we're gonna start with Devana Harris. She's our student government president this year and she's gonna tell you about some of the clubs and activities she's in.
Hi, everybody. My name is Devana Harris. I am a part of student government, of course, Key Club, Astra, NHS, Senior Cabinet, Junior Cabinet. I am also a varsity cheerleader for basketball, football, game day and competition, and then I also am on the varsity track team.
She just told you what you don't.
Next, we have Senior Josie Lyons and she is our senior class president this year.
Yeah, I've been involved in student government for four years. I'm in National Honor Society and I was in junior and senior cabinet as well as being the senior class president this year.
And next, we have Tracy Parker. She's a senior this year and this is our first time on student government.
Yeah, this is my, yeah, this is my first year in student government. I'm super excited. They do a lot of fun things and I am in student government now. I'm on senior cabinet. I'm in Troy Tones, I'm in Astra and Fashion Club.
And then rounding out, we have Kyle Penny. Kyle's first year is on student government this year as well and I'm really excited to see him. I know he's an outstanding young man because he's been my Latin student for the past three years. Have a lot of faith in Kyle, for sure.
So, yeah, so I've been in her Latin class for three years. I'm also a part of Latin Club and then first year on student government and then I'm also in junior cabinet and then I'm on the varsity tennis team.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So Devana's gonna walk us through a little presentation about, all about student government and what our function is and if you have any questions for at the end, she'd be happy to answer those or anybody would.
Yes. Okay, so our theme this year is Ohana and Ohana is the meaning of family. It's inspired by the movie Lilo and Stitch and embraces the true essence of Trojan family, spirit at Troy High School. Our mission is to focus on inclusivity and creating a safe and loving environment for all students. So first, we have our dance and pep rallies. Student government plans and hosts themes, theme dances annually, including homecoming, hall decoration and winter formal. We handle everything from dress up day selection to decorations, ticket sales and hiring DJs. Our pep rallies aren't just noise, they're celebrations that unite our school. We support our sports teams, clubs and academic success. In the previous years, we've done like where we have our athletes come out on the floor and everyone like will stand and honor them and just congratulate them for all their successes throughout the season. And we also organize games and competitions which allows all of our students to get involved and just have a good time for the pep rallies. And then we also have the cheerleaders and band perform our fight song and then we always end every pep rally with our alma mater. No, okay. Okay, then next, we have our committees. We have three committees. Our committees are decoration, spirit and rally. Our decoration committee is responsible for planning, creating and setting up decorations for our dancing events. We strive to make our events unforgettable for our students. Next up, we have our spirit committee. Spirit committee makes creative themes for our dances and dress up weeks. This committee aims to boost school spirit and bring some excitement into our school days. The last committee we have is rally committee. The rally committee is mostly involved with our student engagement. They come with, they come up with interactive games and activities. This committee helps to ensure a smooth flow of our pep rallies. Lastly, we have some of our community things or events that we're involved in. Student government members serve as ambassadors as community festivals and events, service projects and volunteer opportunities. We extend our school pride by creating meaningful connections throughout our whole community. So here, we have, last year, we went to the Hug the Earth Festival. It was a great time. We all got split up into different, I guess, sections, I guess you would say, and just kinda helped out there where we were needed. So, yeah, we had a good time there. That's all I had.
I would say one other thing that we were able to do in the past couple of years is the Renaissance Program reached out to us. This is a program that's throughout Ohio high schools and they really try to promote school spirit. They even will rebrand schools that are struggling with an identity and things like that and we've really learned a lot. I, I like this school because we don't just focus on sports, we try to be very inclusive and we focus on like quiz team or the coding club or esports and things like that. Those kids don't usually get recognition and we like to include not just athletes. I mean, we're very proud of our athletes, but we like to include everyone. And the other thing I wanted to say about this, this theme we have this year for the Ohana Family Matters, I feel like that's really focusing on the why of Troy, the you matter, because we wanna make sure that everybody feels accepted and know that they are important here at Troy High School. So, well-chosen theme. I think that's really good. Yeah, I like that a lot.
How do you get to be a member of the student government?
Well, there's an election process.
Yes.
And you have to get so many signatures from the people in your grade and then you get put on the ballot and then your grade votes for you.
If you have already been on student government, you don't have to get the signatures again, but you do have to rerun every year. And if you don't get on, there's always an option to run at large, which means that you would go in front of the entire student government and kinda plead your case and they'll vote for a few members to be added on after the elections have already finished.
And is there so many per grade?
That's correct. So it's usually 10 per grade plus our president and vice president. They run separately. They run first for student body president and vice president, like on a ticket. And then whoever gets up, then we elect our representatives, 10 seniors, 10 juniors, 10 sophomores, and then we have to wait until the following year to elect the freshmen. So we elect 10 freshmen, we just had that election. And then tomorrow, we will elect three more, what are called members at large. So those are only, those spots are only available to the candidates who ran who were not placed on student government in the first place. So it's not like an open election, but those three then will join student government and will have an odd number in case we ever have to vote on something. It would be good to have an odd number, right? And then they serve the entire year. And then the, of course, the student body president and vice president are only open to seniors and that it's only open to people that have been on student government before. You can't just decide you wanna be student body president because that's where the committees are so important, because I feel like if you serve on a committee, you understand the workings of student government a little bit and can better lead student government. So that's the thought process behind that. Good question, thank you.
How do you decide who's on the committees? Do people say, "I want that committee" or do you?
Basically, technically, we have like a, basically you vote for, we have, since we have three committees, you would like put one, two, three, like your favorite.
You rank them.
Yeah, you rank your favorite and from there, I guess, you just tally that up.
Right, well, so our ranking is, one, I really wanna be on this committee.
Yes.
Two, this committee would be okay.
Right.
Three, please do not put me on this committee. So we take seniority into accountability. Basically, Devana and I will sit down with probably Josie, our vice president, who could be here tonight, and we will just go through the seniors first, but we try to even out the committee so there are someone from each grade level on the committee so that the older ones that have been on that committee before can show the ropes to the younger ones who have not been on the committee. And then we try to, because I feel like our two biggest things that we do are the rallies and our dance, our midwinter dance. And so we try to really stack the rally committee to be larger than the other two. The design committee also will do things like design our t-shirts. Not these, but we have different student government t-shirts that they design that are really cool. I think you saw the pictures. Or they will, we've been talking for years about trying to get a mascot and so they would be involved in like selecting a mascot for us and things like that. And so the design committee is, seems like the least glamorous, but it really is, they make posters for spirit and things like that. So that's our smallest committee, but they're still very, very important.
Girls wanna talk a little bit about how you guys kinda advocate for student body when you need to come to me or other administrators, like things like that, that kinda connection? What did you just come to me about? What did we just have, some discussions?
We, we just had a meeting with Ms. Dietrich and the new athletic director, Mr. Wright, about the, we're making a video for our announcements, because we're both in mass communications, which means that we go on air and.
Make videos.
And all that fun stuff. I think it's your third year and my second year.
Yes.
But we're trying to make a video about student section etiquette at the football games. So how to act, you know, don't be hooligans and then how to cheer, like the cheers. A lot of, we noticed that the other classmen didn't really know what they were doing at the first home game.
So this would just be like informing them and letting them know and see how to do the cheers so then they can learn.
Right.
That's cool.
It's an open door. So these, in years past, that's just how, it's been amazing that they kinda listen to the student body, if they have ideas, things that they want to do when they run for president and so kinda explain the difference between your guys' presidential capacities. You guys could explain that real quick, but when they do that, they come to me too and ask like, "Hey, we wanna kinda promote something, here's the ideas that we're having, is this okay to kinda run on this platform, right, that we would like to see some things happen or what we'd like to go on?" It's always amazing ideas, so usually I let them run with it, but.
But, I mean, it is a very, I will definitely concur that it's a very much open door and there are some things that they all make campaign promises and I'll say, "Yeah, that's a great idea" or, you know, "I'm sorry, we can't do that." Like, for example, they want to have the courtyard available at lunchtime and that would be amazing, but there are math classes that have windows open and so we just can't promise that. Or there's been talk about a coffee bar for years and that's all well and good until we decide that, oh wait, student government has to show up early, they have to run that, they have to clean up after it, you know, things like that. So Ms. Dietrich really helps us think through our grandiose ideas or things like that and has been really supportive because we all want Troy to be the best it can be and that's really what student government is at its heart. It's just like trying to make Troy the best it can be, like however that happens. And I'm really proud of everybody on student government. They really, I'm super proud. I don't think you hear that enough. I'm really, really proud of you.
So for me, I am the president of student government, so I'm kinda in charge of the school as a whole. I, basically, student government is kinda just like looking after each grade. Like for Josie, she's more of the seniors, but yeah, I take care of like the whole school, if that makes sense.
She's more important than me.
No, that's not the point. Seniors have a lot going on this year. Obviously, it's their last year, so they have a lot to do and she has a lot to do, so, yeah.
It's nice to split that responsibility.
Yes, definitely.
Doesn't all fall on one person.
And honestly, she helps a lot with me. I feel like I do a lot.
Same way, same way.
So we talk a lot between the two, even though it's different.
Yep.
Last thing I was gonna just mention too about our pep rallies, one of the things that I love to see our student government do is, I mean, they're up in the stands with our students now, like encouraging them to cheer and volunteer for the games, because they don't pick that ahead of time, so it's just like volunteers, 10 freshmen need to come down and be in this game. So they are out there, so they're, you know, it's, they put themselves out there in front of their peers and are excellent leaders and just role models for our students. So they, they really do make a difference and help us, you know, that, that part of it, because I think that when it comes from the students, it means more, so.
And I think it's incredible that you're all-inclusive of all. I mean, we have so many student organizations in this, which I'm really proud of, that there's, you know, you have an idea and you wanna create a club of some sort, I mean, and so many of those clubs just do amazing things, so I think it's great that you include everybody.
Really interesting to take a tally sometime of like every, like you guys listed all of, I mean, every member of student government, you should hear the list that all of them are, you know what I mean, involved in. It'd be kinda cool to see the span of what, what all is represented on student government, because it's a really wide range of the members.
There's gotta be like one of everything.
Their house ring, their house ring.
That'd be kinda cool.
We should do that.
That's great, that's great.
Well, you're certainly making an impact and thank you for stepping up and doing that for your, for the school and for your fellow students. That's pretty impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
As we always say, you are welcome to stay, you do not have to. We're gonna go through the rest of our agenda. You were the highlight of the day. Thank you. Board committee reports. Ms. Davis?
Yes, for the Hayner Cultural Center. Recently, I think I talked about this at the last meeting, they were trying to reformat their board and go after younger members to be a little, a little better at marketing maybe and getting some new blood in. So they were successful in getting two new board members on the Hayner Cultural Center. They also have hired two more people because Terry Lynn is retiring and she is, from what I understand, the basis of like four people. She does so much. I, I don't know exactly what she does and I've never personally met her, but she must be very skilled. So they've replaced her with one full-time person and another part-time person as they ease into that transition. She's retiring and they're gonna do a ceremony at the end of October. The levy committee is currently working on 250 signs, two billboards, a radio ad and a fact sheet to be passed out for their levy coming up. The chiller is finally up and running as we are ending summer, so that's perfect. It got up at the end of August, but they're loving it and they were, there will also be a horticultural update paid for by the Friends of Hayner, so if you see yard work and bushes and things like that, that is not coming from any sort of outsourced, that is coming from the Friends of Hayner. And there is also a new exhibit board going up, or it is up, compliments of David Fair. He was responsible for designing that, also paid for by the Friends of Hayner. And the Friends of Hayner is sponsoring, so someone out of state found an original Hayner Distillery whiskey in their grandparents' basement. So they shipped it back here and they're going to do a raffle that will sell for, I believe, $20 a ticket and they are going to raffle off, not that bottle, but they're going to sell 400 tickets and I believe there's gonna be 50 winners and then it's at the end of the month and you, those 50 winners get to go and have a taste of that original whiskey. All the proceeds, again, go to the Friends of Hayner. And that is the largest update I've ever given on the Hayner.
Porch Fest.
Porch Fest, thank you Levi! Porch Fest is coming up this Saturday, so you can get your ticket. Do we have any tickets for that? I don't think you just go.
You just go from house to house, listen to great music, it's all over downtown.
I'm planning on going this year, yes, thank you. Porch Fest is also this Saturday.
Anything else?
It's my whole sheet.
Levi, anything from Upper Valley?
Yeah, I have a little longer update than normal as well, but probably not as long as theirs. Our presentation this month was from the UVCC Foundation, so that's a separate group outside the board, kinda like a non, like a nonprofit type group. They set up a scholarship fund and the goal's to raise some funds because it's a 50th year anniversary this year, some activities coming up throughout the next few months, but the goal's to raise $3 million into that balance and then be able to give money every year to recent graduates, students to help with tools or other startup cost when they, when they complete their program, because you could imagine a toolkit or maybe some fees or entrance exams, certifications that they need to get are costly as well and, and that student hasn't, you know, started a job yet and so help, help with the donation there. We've got the Yellowstone trip, a really cool trip. Every year, every September, a group of students go out west and for a little over a week. This year, there's 11 students from landscaping and environmental sciences program will be out there, leaving this week, September 10th through the 19th. They'll fly out there and they'll, they'll get a lot of hands-on experience in terms of talking with park rangers, sightseeing, different, really, really neat, cool opportunity out there at the Yellowstone National Park. Our German exchange program will be happening again this year. In October, the 15th through the 30th, there will be seven students from Germany staying over with families of students from UVCC and then in the spring, we'll have our, our students will go over to Germany again. U.S., U.S. Representative Mike Carey visited the Career Center on the 28th of August, so a couple of weeks ago. We have 18 new staff members this year and that's partially due to, you know, obviously there's always change over each year, but also enrollment's up. We started day one of the Career Center with 1,198 students enrolled this year, which is 50, a new record, 54 more students than our previous record of last year. So continues to grow and it'll be exciting to see what happens in the coming years as well, once all of our, our classrooms are completely updated and, and everything like that, so what new programs and how we can continue to expand as well.
Thank you. Mr. Piper?
So.
I'm sorry, is, this is a first reading, right?
Yeah, first reading.
Thank you.
So again, periodically throughout the year, we have policy update recommendations, so there's a first reading and then next month, I'll ask you for, for approval of these policies. I shared with you some background information on all the policies, kinda lengthy list this time. I think our meeting with the Neola rep was three and a half hours this time. So I'll walk you through some of the changes and why and if you have questions along the way, of course, as always, feel free to ask, but I'll move kinda quick because there's a lot of them, so if I go too fast, just stop me. The first one, and a lot of our policies, like you'll see the first recommendation for revision is policy 1613, 3213 and 4213. They're all the same policy that show up in different areas in our policy. So the 1000s are for administration, the 2000s are for classified staff, the 3000s are for certified staff, so that's why you'll see some of these policies that are in triplicate, like this one. This one is revised because they have simply provided a new definition of, for grooming in the Parents' Bill of Rights. So that impacted these three policies and needed those revisions. Next one is policy 2266, which is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. This one is revised for a few different reasons, mainly because the, in this one, the definition of fondling has been changed in the national incident-based reporting system. Also, the DC office address has changed for the Office for Civil Rights. Policy 243002 has to do with participation of community and STEM school, homeschool educated and home-educated students and extracurriculars. This one's been changed a few times recently. This one has now restricted participation to homeschooled students, students only and not from other adjacent or non-adjacent districts. That was a conversation we had a while back. So legislation has changed on that, that is now restricted.
I have, I have some questions on this one, just because I don't think I understand it. So a homeschool student obviously doesn't have access to clubs and athletics, right? So they can participate in their, if they live in Troy and are homeschooled, Troy Athletics.
They may, yes, they may participate.
Do they, but can they live in tip and do Troy or do they have to do tip?
I believe if they do live in tip and want to do Troy, they cannot.
Okay.
Unless it's ice hockey.
Which has just changed.
And that's gonna be my next question. I think that's where I get confused. But if I live in a district that doesn't offer the sport I want, is that?
Ice hockey.
For example, I guess.
No, like it's literally changed. This new set of laws has now allowed students within 20 miles to attend, to, to play ice hockey for a district where they do not live.
If, as long as their district doesn't offer it?
Correct.
Okay.
In that specific example, we talked about that last year, but I think that student also would still be greater than 20 miles away, so.
Right, yep. That's why I kept saying ice hockey.
Okay.
It's a bit convoluted. This one's been revised a few times recently, so.
Well, I think that's why I got confused of where people can go.
Yeah, yes.
How does that work with private, sorry, I'm sorry, with private school kids? Because we do have Troy Christian kids playing sports here, so why is that allowed?
Because by law, it's permitted.
So that is not, that's a separate, whole separate policy?
Students that live in the district that is providing that sport, no matter where they attend or if they don't attend, have the right to play that sport, just like any other student has the right to access that sport. Does, I should use the word play, has the right to participate in that sport.
I think that's, that's in a policy later on, but it said if that private school doesn't offer the sport.
Doesn't offer it?
Yes.
That, that's, that's a, yeah, so you can't choose.
Like, for example, we have some Troy Christian junior high students that are playing football for us because they don't offer junior high football.
We have some girls soccer players because their soccer program fell apart.
Same. Policy 2431 is about the same thing. It, it refers to the ice hockey specifically. And these athletic policies, I mean, having been an athletic director, you really gotta keep an eye on what the new requirements are. Whenever we get these questions, we just check policy, which is why it's important to make sure they're always revised and up to date. Moving on, policy 3130 says the superintendent shall assign teachers based on the best interest of students enrolled in the district and it gets away from seniority kind of discussions with that. Policy 5130 is a simple change where, whereas before, if a student was to withdraw from school and wasn't enrolled somewhere else, I would be required to notify the registrar of motor vehicles. That requirement is now gone. Policy 5136 is the big one that we've all been talking about. It's cellphone policy, so we've talked about this for the past, I don't know, year, every month for the year, because this policy has, the law has changed multiple times, the policy therefore has to change multiple times, maybe. So as it stands, previously, the legislature, legislature passed a law that said they required schools to have a personal communications device policy, cellphone policy. So we did before that, but we revised our cellphone policy when that new requirement came out about a year ago, as did every other district in the state. And then apparently that wasn't restrictive enough, so they passed another law to further restrict or attempt to restrict student access to cellphones in schools. And we've seen a trend recently where laws aren't written very clearly and they're, and that's why they have to be revised several times. I think this is another example of that, because the law spoke to the instructional day, instructional day. So we are familiar with the term instructional day. We have to track student attendance and when we track, track student attendance, we track their instructional day, which includes all of the classes they take, study halls, all that kinda stuff, but it does not include lunch in their instructional day. That term is already defined. So when they passed the law on said instructional day, we assumed, as you would expect, that that definition was as it has been. So that is how the Neola lawyers are interpreting that law based on that. The law does not redefine instructional day, but since the passage of the law, the Ohio Department of Education has sent out some additional guidance, friendly, helpful advice that instructional day is, no, no, we mean all day. Well, again, that's not what the law says. So in talking with Alexis and Jeff Gruelich, who are mainly who it applies to, because currently in our junior high and high school, students are permitted to use their cellphones at lunch, right? And according to those two building principles, that has not caused, I'll speak for you, feel free to speak up too, but it has not caused any issues that we're aware of. It seems reasonable. And also, just from a personal perspective and an educator perspective, students have cellphones, we know that. They're a tool. I think part of our job is to help them use them appropriately. That's another part of the discussion we've had. So our recommendation is not to currently change our policy, it's still to permit students to use them during lunch. Do I expect that they may further refine this law again and define instructional day? Maybe, they might. And if they do, then we can revise our policy again. But in discussions with Alexis and Jeff, that's, that's what we're recommending, that we kind of keep it as it is and allow our students to use them in lunch. I will tell you that in grades six and below, students can have them in their backpacks, but they can't have them out throughout the day, which includes lunch. And the reason for that, I think, is twofold. One, kids are more mature as they enter junior high and high school, expectations should change for them and also they're involved in a lot of activities. You heard our students tonight. And as a parent, these kids are out of high school, I'm glad to no longer receive those messages where I forgot this jersey or those shorts or that pair of socks or this water bottle or my batting helmet. bottle, or my batting helmet. Not that I ever got those, but kids, kids have those interactions, and it's, it's not so bad for them to be able to check their phone at lunch and see what mom is bringing them at the end of the day, they, they forgot. So, that's our rationale. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I thought at the last board meeting, didn't we go over and talk about it was up to the teachers, in high school, it was up to the teachers, it's their discretion to decide in their classroom if the, if the student can have their phone or not.
So that's kind of how the high school has operated in the past. Students could use them in the hallways, they could use them at lunch, and in the classrooms, it was teacher discretion. I, I think that made a lot of sense. Now, we, we're a one-to-one district, so all of our students have Chromebooks, so there's probably not as great of a need for our students to have access to their cellphones during class time because they have their Chromebooks. And Chromebooks and cellphones are a powerful device with all of the world's information at your fingertips. But because our kids have Chromebooks, we think that's good for them in classrooms. Some kind of backed off that a little bit. And now it's just lunch. Right, Alexis?
Yeah, I mean, if we, to start the school year, you know, our teachers, they're pretty strict about it in the classroom. It's forty-five minutes that it's put away and turned off. Right now, because the law didn't go into place, and we weren't sure where we were going to land with, with Neola's recommendations and explanations and things, we did not change yet. So, in between classes and the study hall times, so once January first comes, they know, the students are already going to prep, and they know this is coming. So we encourage them to practice, not having it out as much as possible and things, but they're aware, they know what's coming.
January first is when the new restriction takes effect. And I was at the junior high when Mr. Gruhlak had all the students there for the start of the year talk, and he had the same conversation with his students. Hey, this is where we are at today, this is what you're allowed to do, please use that appropriately, but it may change. So, we're staying flexible. But I think we're all confident, obviously, in what we've recommended. But again, these are board policies, so-
End of law.
Do you have any other questions about this one, or? Again, I'm not asking to approve it yet, so.
Right.
Move on?
Move on.
Okay. Policy fifty-two hundred is about attendance. Basically, it does several things that are minor. One of those is requires us to have at least one, the absence intervention team in the district, we currently have several. It also indicates that students can now miss up to eight hours of school if they attend a driver's education course. Policy fifty-five, fifty-two twenty-three is another one of those that has been revised multiple times. It's about release time for religious instruction. The law has changed several times, therefore, our policy has changed several times. This one does a few things, defines how many times and limits how many times the students may be released for religious instruction, and also explicitly states that students may bring back with them external educational programs and materials, whereas that was more restrictive before.
Can you let us know, when is this, there's a group starting this, right? Is it this week, next week? Do you know when that's starting?
I don't know when, I think it was supposed to start this week, but I don't know that it is. I, I talked to Clint Hufford today, and he hasn't heard anything about lunches, so I think there's maybe a bit of a delay. But I, I plan on asking our principals tomorrow.
Because it's, it's going to be during their lunchtime?
Yeah. Sixty-one oh-nine is a new policy that authorizes the use of credit card payments as acceptable. Sixty-one fifty-two is a technical change due to that credit card addition for student fees, fines, and charges. Policy sixty-eight thirty is about audits, and it strikes the option to delegate the duty to count funds to a representative from the auditor's office, whereas that was permitted before. Any questions, Jeff is happy to answer those. Seventy-five forty is about digital content accessibility. The American with Disabilities Act requires us to make our web content and mobile applications accessible, so it deals with that. Policy seventy-five forty-one is deleted and rescinded because it's now included in policy eighty-three hundred. Eighty-three hundred updates language about cybersecurity that's required from House Bill ninety-six. Policy eighty-three oh-five is also about information security, again, from requirements in House Bill ninety-six. Policy eighty-four hundred is about school safety. This one, in the, in the cellphone bill, it specifically says that students, that the district has to have a plan, in their emergency response plan, to instruct students what they're able to do with cellphones in the case of emergency. So students will be able to access cellphones if there was a, a school emergency.
So when they can't have their cellphones during class, they cannot use them during the classroom, starting in January, where would their phones be?
Well-
Saying that they're in our backpacks right now.
They just can't get caught with their phone?
We just don't have the museum.
We, we're not going to ask where they are, just, they can't have them out in class. We don't want to collect phones, they're a thousand dollars apiece, we don't want to be in that business.
I wouldn't either.
Yeah.
I don't know if I like that.
Policy eighty-four sixty-two has to do with student abuse and neglect, and this modified, it strikes the requirement that sexual violence training for kids has to be provided by a law enforcement officer or prosecutor. That was a requirement before that strikes that requirement. Policy eighty-six forty, important stuff here, transportation for non-routine trips permits students to eat or drink on the bus. Policy ninety-two seventy, which is, has to do with equivalent education outside the schools and participation in extracurriculars not enrolled in the district. This one clarifies that home-educated special education students may participate in ROTC programs. So that was that one. The next list of policies, and it's a long, separate, separate list at the bottom of my recommendations for you. This has fourteen policies. Three of those policies are replacements for adoption, six of those policies are for deletion, and five policies have technical corrections, all because there have been changes in, in updates and consolidating all of our non-discrimination, equal employment, opportunity, anti-harassment policies. So it's really cleaning up all of those many policies and making them more concise, more clear, and in smaller in number. That is the exciting list of policy recommendations. Are there any other questions?
Well, I think government cleanup of some policies and reducing them and consolidating is a great thing that probably doesn't usually happen, so we should celebrate that.
I don't think the government did this one. I don't think the government did this one.
Probably Neola.
I think it was Neola.
Congrats to Neola.
Yes.
Nope.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
We will now have the first hearing of the public. This is for anything currently on the agenda.
Is that the one I gave you out on the panels? On the agenda or not on the agenda?
That'd be, not on the items, not on the agenda.
Right.
Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
May I please have a motion to, for consideration of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on Monday, August eleventh, and the special meeting on Monday, August eighteenth?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers, thank you, Mr. Fox. Are there any comments or questions regarding the minutes?
There is no first hearing.
Mr. Price?
He's not on the agenda, so it's second.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion to, for the financial report, here to incorporate it in Exhibit C, SM two, monthly revenue, monthly expenditures, et cetera.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Been busy prepping for final appropriations, which is the next resolution will be brought before you. We have received final settlement for, from the county auditor, where we are currently awaiting the reimbursement from State of Ohio for that settlement. Outside of that, things are, have been busy, but we're gradually catching back up with fiscal year end and final setup of current fiscal year, school year.
Is there anything that stood out to you this month?
No, not really. A lot of supply orders have gone out, so we spent a lot of supply dollars that have been budgeted for the year. Medical claims are down so far, coming out of the summer break, which is good news, so hopefully that can cause.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any additional comments or questions? Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion for approval of the twenty-twenty-five amended certificate of estimated resources and twenty-twenty-six appropriations?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
You have the certificate of available balances, as well as appropriation resolution. If you compare this year's appropriations to last year's, they are up drastically, and that's because of our building project. We will have a lot of dollars find their way outside of the district as we move along. You have approved the first two building GMPs, so those buildings, they are currently constructing foundation forms and doing digging, so as we move throughout this school year, the first two buildings will start coming up out of the ground. The next two new buildings, west and south, we anticipate approving those GMPs at a special meeting towards the end of October. And then, which, those are currently out in the market right now. The high school project, that is currently being wrapped up. The last piece is placement of mechanical yard on the west side of the high school. We met with the fire department today, they are going to be in contact with the county and doing some additional research on their part. We had a preliminary placement, but after that discussion with fire department representation this afternoon, I may get adjusted a little bit depending upon, they wanted to check a few things, do a little further research on some components that were of concern to them. So that may slide down towards the south end of the parking lot a little more, and be more directly, directly out from the weight room on the west side. Right now, it kind of is split between weight room and the parking lot that sits directly outside of the two western exits from the hallway in front of Fletcher Gym and then down towards the tech area. So that will be determined, hopefully, by midweek this week, and then they will wrap final documentation up with that and push that out for bidding, hopefully by the end of March.
Are there any comments or questions?
Overall appropriations, we are just over a hundred and forty-six million, which is twice a normal annual budget, and that's due primarily to the construction project ongoing.
Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Price?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion for then and now? Ohio revised code fifty-seven oh-five dot four-one provides that if prior certification of funds by the fiscal officer was not obtained before the contract or order involving the expenditure of money was made, the fiscal officer may instead certify. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
One from transportation, Hainer, a couple from, a couple of elementarys and athletic department, nothing major.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion to approve tax rates? Ohio revised code section fifty-seven oh-five dot thirty-four requires boards of education to approve tax rates each year after these rates have been certified by the County Budget Commission.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
This is an additional approval due to our five-point-nine mil operating levy renewal being on the May ballot with the community's approval. That's now brought before you for finalization. Couldn't be included with the earlier one that we did back in March because it hadn't been voted on yet.
To expire twenty-twenty-nine?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion for the superintendent's report, a resolution accepting gifts to Troy City School District and expressing thanks to, and expressing the thanks of the Troy Board of Education?
So moved.
Second.
Not to take away from the kids, or you, second best tonight? What do you got?
Policies, what?
Yeah, policy is right up there.
No, this is always a nice item when you agenda, it's a good reminder. First, I'll say what a great start to the school year it's been, and this is a reminder that I'll get to why. But it's been, it's really been a great, smooth start to the school year. Clearly, a lot of planning went into everyone's kickoff, from transportation to food service to all the building operations. We've had the chance to go around and visit all the different buildings, and although we're only, what, two, three, four weeks in now, this has been a really smooth start. I think the weather was very helpful, so we appreciate that, and just appreciate everybody getting after it already, and kids are learning, teachers are teaching, which is what you want. And we've had the chance to talk to some new employees that are new here in Troy, and just the glowing reports that they all have with how helpful everyone is. We heard it again today from Dr. Turner, our new people services director, just how helpful transportation, food service are, and where in her previous district, it would take a month for an answer, it happens in days, or a day here, so. Great things are happening, we appreciate all of that. And it's a reminder of the start of the school year because Dr. Moore and I today were taking the various things that people have donated, notebooks, pencil boxes, backpacks. We have, I think, five garbage bags full of backpacks, new backpacks, not, not garbage, new backpacks, pencils, crayons, markers, you name it. We filled six big tote bags. It all came in, we divided it up between the six bags, so each elementary principal tomorrow is going to be handed one of those bags with a lot of stuff in it that they will give to their school counselor, who will give it to the kids that need it. And you see on the list here, there's a lot of organizations that have donated school supplies and materials to us, so we're going to make sure that gets out to those kids. There's probably, I don't know, do you think, Michael, a hundred backpacks there? If, if not, more, easily a hundred.
Easily a hundred, that's concerning.
Yeah, so we'll get that out to them tomorrow, and it'll get to the kids. So we appreciate all of that. Not all of our donations are money, a lot of it's that too, but there's a lot of money here too, so let's say thanks to that. You'll see a very wide range of donations, monetary donations, from a hundred and fifty-two dollars to six thousand dollars to our high school orchestra. So, all that being said, our monthly total is seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents, and our fiscal year to date total is forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-seven cents, all of which we appreciate.
It's always exciting to see the way that our community supports our students and our schools.
Very much.
Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a resolution to approve reimbursement? May I please have a resolution to approve reimbursement in lieu of transportation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
So this is another reminder that we're close to the start of the school year, so in Ohio, public districts are required to transport students to attend non-publics unless they are impractical, which is defined by greater than 30 minutes travel time one direction. So these families have been notified for, or have agreed to payment in lieu of transportation.
Jeff?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion for the gifted policy update?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
So our gifted administrator handles gifted policies. Michael, anything to?
Just a couple brief updates. One of the things, and actually the high schools work closely with us, is to make sure that our policy reflects that the students accelerated in algebra or math, and the, excuse me, algebra or geometry, as well as bio, that there's an opportunity there, as long as there's a, for an acceleration plan that, put that in place, and honestly, it helps identify for report card purposes that we have more students taking rigorous academic work at a younger age, and so it helps our report card. Also, we want all kids, it's a good problem to have, we want all kids taking courses that challenge them, and we're seeing more of that through our junior high students, working with the high schools as well, and some acceleration, and some staffing things, so they use more of that as well. There's some other things in here regarding, we wanna make sure that our services provided are not unusually restrictive for all students, that all students have an opportunity to attend. There's a sentence in there that says students who transfer in the district, minority economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, English learners, that we are not placing barriers in front of them, that we try to provide opportunities for all kids to achieve a high levels. There's some clarification in there on academic goals for students who are identified as gifted, that they are aligned with and measurable in terms of the high of learning standards, which I like, and also that reasonable attempts are made if there's needs to communicate with parents regarding educational plans, that we're taking appropriate steps to do that. There's some changes regarding creative thinking ability, eliminated as a requirement for whole-grade screening, new language, clarified that a district's plan for gifted identification is subject to audit by the Ohio Department of Education workforce. Aside from that, we do this annually, and it's just based on changes in statute. Those often come to us late in August, and once we have those, we try to ask you guys to approve that, so it's part of our plan and it's available to parents. Honestly, I think nothing in here that I'm concerned about, or nothing in here that I think you guys need to be concerned about either, I think these are positive updates for the kids.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
I'll take any questions. Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion to approve the marching band trip to London, England?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. It's pretty exciting.
So not their first trip across the pond, and Mrs. Veneman is just recovering from hosting band competition?
We're in good shape.
Good shape? Already fully recovered?
Oh, I won't go that far. We're in good shape.
Is there anything you wanna say about the trip?
Sure, there is a small typo in the minutes. This is for next school year, not this school year.
Yes.
But we start with a pretty long payment schedule to let families adequately plan to collect that money, so. But the dates, the 27th and 3rd are correct.
It's the 27th of '26 and the 3rd of '27.
Correct.
All right.
Twenty-seven.
We're really excited, this is a once every four-year trip that we talk about with our students for a long time, so they're really excited to go.
That's pretty cool.
So no pressure, but saying no now would be...
So every, every, every...
We should have staged that.
You know? So every class gets at least an opportunity to go.
Every class gets one opportunity during high school to go.
And they, do they have opportunities for fundraisers or?
We do. We have some fundraisers that are kind of ongoing, and then we do have some special individual fundraisers, logistics, you know, pending, that we can do to help track the cost of the student's trips.
Thank you.
Can you remind us, what are all the different cities that they visit? Is it like Rose Parade and other things as well?
Sure, in the past, we've visited, we just took a trip last year to Orlando and did Disney and Universal there. We've also gone to Chicago and Toronto before. In London, this trip is just London proper, but there are lots of different choices that the students get to make and make a custom itinerary for, to visit different museums or shopping opportunities, historical sites, whatever they want the trip to be.
Oh, thank you for that. Sorry, I meant, what's the rotation each year? Is it London every four years, and is it Rose Parade every, you know, certain things? What are, what are the, what are those different cities?
Sure, so it's London every four years. We take a year off to recover, and then the trip, the next year, the location can vary.
Okay.
And so the past couple years, it's been Orlando, it hasn't always been that. That's where we've also done Chicago or Toronto, those types of things as well. Sometimes it's more of a marching band gear trip. Our trip to Toronto was more of a concert band gear trip, so we gave a concert band performance and saw some more traditional type of musical performances happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Veneman.
Sounds really exciting.
We're very excited.
I just, I was just fortunate enough to go to London for a week, so I saw all the spots. They're gonna have fun.
Come with us, we'd love to have you.
They need chaperones.
Yes, I'd go back. It was fun.
Are there any other questions?
Motion?
No pressure, but Jeff, go ahead. See how this goes.
It was Mr. Fox first and Mr. Reddick second.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. It was a music-themed evening. May I please have a motion to approve the orchestra trip to New York City, New York? And it looks like that will be 2026?
Yeah, that's this year.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
And Mrs. Strip is here, if she'd like to say another trip?
We have been to Chicago, and we've been to New York City before, and we're happy to go back again. The orchestra and students get a chance to see some shows, Broadway shows, also the symphonies, performances, and this time, we have opted for the opportunity to work with the staff conductor for the New York Philharmonic.
Wow.
So that's a, that's like a once-in-a-lifetime thing.
That's amazing.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I'm jealous. I told the kids today, I said, "I want to be in your shoes."
Yeah.
So, and they'll get to go see the different sights, do the ferry around the Statue of Liberty, and then do some shopping in Times Square and Little Italy and Chinatown.
It's very exciting.
Another amazing trip.
Yep, we'd love to have you.
You guys are killing me.
Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Fox?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion for personnel items attached here to reference Exhibit I, September personnel items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Veneman?
So I'm going to ask for a slight change, just a date change. We popped those today, so if you look down under Employment's Administrative, Michael Moore, it says 10-2025, I should say 10-2025. We'd like to have them back one day earlier.
As long as he agreed to it.
Well, it's, well, that's a time hack, guys, but if you're okay with that, it should be a two, not a three, my apologies. A few other things I'd like to point out, a few, you know, kind of standard resignations from substitute teachers that went on to do other things, but one I'd like to highlight, Mark Reethman, science teacher here at the high school, so I looked today, he's been teaching here in Troy since 1995, so this is his 30th year in Troy City Schools, which is pretty amazing for somebody to spend, he actually came to us, I believe, with one year, so I think that he has some additional years beyond that, but 30 consecutive years, he has seen, at this point, I'd say possibly generations of Trojans from his first year to now his last year, so.
Is there a particular science he teaches?
He does a little bit of everything, some physical science.
Physics. Physical science mostly now.
Okay.
I think he's taught a couple other along the way, but he's mostly done physics and physical science.
I kind of sighed because that is a, I've mentioned this to Mrs. Deager, candidate for Dillbong, that's a tough one to fill, and we need somebody good in that spot, it's a difficult subject.
It's currently our CCP physics.
I was just gonna ask that.
That's an extra license, right?
So, and the good news is, yeah, we know now, so we'll be able to post that, and I have no doubt we'll find a quality candidate. Our pool this past year was pretty amazing, so I'm excited for that opportunity, but really excited for Mr. Reethman, again, just many, many years giving back to the students of Troy City Schools, so very excited for him. We have a few leaves of absences that I'd asked for you to approve for the purposes of child rearing, as Dr. Moore likes to say, that's good for business, more kids, that's good for the business of kids. And then, just a couple of other items, again, administrative, just one year contract there for Dr. Moore, I'd like him to come back on October 2nd, and then for Mr. Price, it's just an amendment, and that amendment aligns his contract with the changes that we made to the end of the handbook, so that's the rationale behind those adjustments. If you look down, the other thing I would like to highlight in this is really, just to complement our principals, elementary and junior high principals, we had 10 educational openings to start the year, so they came back in August, for those that don't work here, which is all our elementary principals, I thought it might work, so we scheduled interviews, we had a lot of face-to-face, in-person interviews, and I'll be honest and say I was a little bit worried about what the pool was going to look like, but we have some really strong hires here in this group with everything from retired teachers to people that had, were, they were doing this work previously. We are in the process, you'll see nine on this list, and we just finished filling the 10th, which is a behavior support position over at Anclie, so you'll see that on next month's agenda, but I don't want to jinx this, but those sometimes hard-to-fill positions, I believe they're all filled now, so very happy about that and thankful for the principals' their time, they put a lot of time into coming over to the board office and sitting down and doing face-to-face interviews with those folks. Last page, we've got a few supplemental contracts, again, some things there, just kind of filling in positions as people come back, you'll see like Future Begins today, you'll see mentors for our new teachers. You may have seen, or maybe you haven't seen, there's some changes to the rest of the program, which sets for our new teachers. The state has changed that program, but there's still a requirement for them to have in mentors, so when you see mentor on here, that's what that is, that's, these are our veteran teachers that we're pairing up with our new teachers to help guide them, some of you that supports them, they can go to questions, they can do observations, and it's just a really nice piece that we offer here for all of our new teachers. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Fox?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Now it is the second hearing of the public. Mr. Creach, can you please state your name and your address?
You can sit right here.
Yep, wherever you want to go, sir.
You have about, and you have three minutes.
I won't even use all that.
Okay.
My name's Rodney Creach, I'm from Rebel County. Do you want my physical address or?
Physical address is fine.
5062 Manas Creek Road, West Alexandria, Ohio 45381. After Mr. Piper's policy update, it's kind of embarrassing to tell you I'm a state representative. Sorry about that.
We can fix it. We can fix it.
But I'm a state rep for Rebel County, cover the 40th district, and I'm running for the senate, which we call, would be, entail all Miami County, it's Senator up in C East Terminal. I was asked to run for the senate, so it's an honor to run for that. I just wanted to put a face to the name, you know, as you can tell, we make a lot of changes for everybody in the state, and I'm not always proud of those. You know, there's a lot of people that go to Columbus and they just want to pass laws, pass laws, pass laws. I've been there five years, I've got three, none of them affect the schools. I will tell you, and Mr. Packard showed me, say this, education is not my strong suit. I'm a farmer, I'm a business owner, and I lean on educational professionals to tell us what, you know, what you need. We do have a retired superintendent up there, Representative Byrd from Claremont County, I work very closely with him, I'll be aligned on a lot of things. Things that I do, you know, when we were going through the budget and there's a lot of issues, you know, I had Rebel County superintendents beating the tar out of me, I said, "Tell you what, let's come up, once you come up to Columbus, I'll provide lunch and we can talk." And so we had education, you know, so my thing is, I'm not gonna come in here, I vote on this stuff and I'm listening, but you know, please, even if I'm not your senator, you gotta reach out to your legislators and tell them what they're doing, good or bad, because a lot of times, you know, we're going out to make changes, to, we're going to fix something, and we end up breaking two things when we're fixing something. There's so many unintended consequences, like with that phone, you know, we just miss stuff. And so, long story short, Rodney Creach, face to the name, Mrs. Davis has my cell phone number, if any of you all would like to meet for a coffee sandwich, get to know me better, anybody in this room, I am an open book, if you ask me a question, I'll give you my opinion, I don't care if you like it or not, and then we can talk about it respectfully. But at the end of the day, I'm not a politician, I never want to be. I have my opinions, but they can always be changed, especially when they're in areas that I don't know a lot about, so that's why I'm here, so thank you for your time.